About the mix up here, didn't realize that the Finance Corporation meeting had been inserted in before the work session that we thought was at 3:30. Well, it is at 3:30, but there's a 3 o'clock Finance Corporation meeting that I overrode. So we need to call it to order. Where's the agenda for that?
For the Finance Corporation.
And Tom, I'm gonna go ahead and do that first because that's the way it was noticed. Okay, let me call the special call meeting of the Brookhaven Finance Corporation to order. Daniel, please call the roll, or Susan, please call the roll.
Okay. Mayor Jay Max Davis. As President, excuse me, President and Chairman Jay Max Davis.
Here.
Vice President, Vice Chairman Rebecca Williams.
Present.
Member Joe Gebbia.
Present.
Member Jim Iyer.
Here.
Member Bates Madison.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, approval of the 2665 Beaufort Highway lease from landlord, the Harold Adams Building Fund.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and members.
Yes.
This is the lease agreement. We are still working on the lease agreement, so you do not have it before you, but time is of the essence. This is the...
They do have a draft.
Thank you. All right, you don't have a draft. This is the Police Department Headquarters, 2665 Beaufort Highway. We did release the contractor on Monday, and they have been working aggressively in the building. We have furniture arriving tomorrow.
When do you expect it to be signed?
Well, the, under, under the possession agreement, it has to be signed by Thursday. And so the, really, the only moving issue that we have at this point, we have circulated the comments that we have made...
Could you speak up, please?
Okay, I'm sorry.
He's got a little bit, he's got a little bitty mic.
I got a little bitty mic.
Well, just with your big booming voice, close to the camera. There we go.
Thank you.
There we go.
We have circulated our comments to the landlord and to their attorney. We don't see any issues, other than we are having some discussions concerning the parking, the additional parking. One, whether or not it's to be reserved, and two, whether we pay them more or not. And I think that's what's open. So that, that agreement should be in a position, and we should finalize it on Thursday, within the period that's been asked for us to do that.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Marie, could you just give us a real quick rundown of the terms?
Yes, the, the terms on the building, it's a five-year lease, and the rent rate is $12.66 a square foot. We are receiving $150,000 in tenant improvements, and we will have off-site parking, which is two properties to the north of the 2665 building. That was negotiated early on, in the discussions of this building, that we needed the overflow parking, especially when we bring court to the building. And we're planning to bring court to the building at the close of their renewal lease of December 2014, so January 2015, we expect court to be moving in to the 2665 building. It will house all police department operations and the command staff, along with the Chief and his deputy.
And our expected timeframe of moving in is what?
Is, I think the last date I was given was December the 27th. And it could be sooner than that, depending on how quickly the contractor moves. And that timing works out perfectly for us, because then that following week, we at City Hall that remain will be moving over to the other side of the office space where the Police Department was housed, and we'll be using that space.
And is this, the base rent numbers that we're looking at, the $15 per square foot for floors?
That's the GSU building. This is $12.66 per square foot.
I'm sorry, tell me that again.
Yes, it's $12.66 a square foot, with a tenant improvement of $150,000, a five-year lease.
And then the, the building would be subleased in its entirety to the City of Brookhaven?
Correct. And the reason for that is, the reason for that is the corporation can enter into multiple year leases, whereby the City Council cannot. You can only enter into an annual lease agreement, which has to be renewable. And so because of that, we were given favorable rent rates.
I think the bottom line that the public would be most concerned with was it'd be a comparison to what we're currently paying right now. So Marie, if you'll give a...
Yes, we're paying $19 a square foot currently.
And this, this is a $12.66?
$12.66, with the, with the tenant improvements of $150,000. And at our current location, we receive no tenant improvements.
Well, I guess one of the real benefits is that it, it leaves them room for expansion.
Absolutely, it does.
And we have a growing police force, so we're well positioned for the next couple of years.
Correct. And also, too, with the relationship with Dickhead County and the jail, it's an excellent location for them, to be able to get onto 85 and take care of that kind of business. So good visibility for their needs, and excited to be a pioneer along Beaufort Highway for the redevelopment opportunities we've talked about.
What do you expect the balance of the work, the remaining construction, will begin and be completed?
Are you referring to the courts?
The courts, and also the additional police improvements, the locker rooms and the evidence room and those types of things.
That will be during the month of January, and hopefully that'll be finished out by end of January, early February. What's being done now is just to make the space habitable. The Police Department understands they're gonna be living amongst construction, and they're happy to do that, just to get more room. Right now, the focus is to paint and re-carpet, clean up a building, and move in furniture so they can begin operations. Our IT department has been working closely with the Police Department, and making sure the communication requirements are met for their needs. Then I would expect that we probably would start sometime by mid to late summer. We would do, we would solicit for another bid for the court, finish out, finish work, and expect that that would occur, like I said, probably midsummer, probably start that process and see construction begin sometime in August, so that they would be ready to move in in January. Now, I will mention that we are relocating the court clerks to the Police Department, so they will be there full-time. We have GCIC that is there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so they're there for backup on the clerks or not, for police reports, or making payments on fines. And then when court is in session, then the clerks will travel to the court.
When does that start?
That's gonna be sometime late January.
So the clerks will no longer be in the court in January?
Correct.
So people that have tickets and whatnot right now, the address to pay those tickets to the clerks is gonna be the Beaufort Highway address?
Correct. And we're gonna have to just work that out as in a transition, so that people will know, and we don't want them getting any more frustrated, but we may have to be housed in the court for a time, and then be able to direct clients.
I'll put up signage, you know, now, yes, Chief, but they'll, they'll be over...
We have one in the board, actually, in figures for the date of, I don't know.
And then a sign should go up as soon as possible in the court now, and say after this date, you'll, the clerk will no longer be here except on days of court.
Okay, we can do that.
Won't they be there when, when the court's in session? Okay.
People come during the week, compare the tickets.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the construction, would we consider going in and building out the court now, if there were economies of scale, doing all the work?
I'd love to do that, yeah. I would absolutely love to do that, if we could get some good pricing on that while we have the construction team there.
And when we get into that, there'll be a full set of pricing drawings, and we'll bid that, and, and to a number of contractors, because of the, having the additional time dispersed was, was quick and dirty, and moving them in. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
But, so let me make sure I understand. We're planning on keeping the municipal court where it is for the next year?
Yes, we have signed, we have entered into a renewal lease of 12 months. It was better for us to do that economically, because the rent rate went from $16 a square foot to $17 a square foot. We could've had a holdover lease, and that would've doubled the rent. So I know we're gonna be there at least six months, probably eight months till we make that move, and so it was better for us to utilize the space at the lower rent rate.
So it'll be a maximum of 12 months at that court, maybe as little as six months?
Correct.
Okay. One thing for Tom here, on the signatory page on the lease, it said a tenant, the City of Brookhaven, would that not be the Brookhaven Finance Corporation, or, I mean, where would we be signing on behalf of the Finance Corporation if we're entering into the lease?
That's, the, the lease was actually in the draft, and that was changing to the Brookhaven Finance Corporation, so that the signature block would change.
Okay.
The tenant needs to change also, but there are some other changes in here that need to be updated.
That's right. And my partner, Keith Germin, is here also, who was actually working on both of these leases, so if there's any additional information or questions regarding the documents themselves that I can't answer, he's, he's available to do so.
Who's that he's got his winter frost going there?
Probably nobody, Marie, if the furniture was donated.
Yes, it was, absolutely, from AutoTrader.
Yes, thank you to AutoTrader. AutoTrader for donating the furniture, saving us a lot of taxpayer money. And we'll have to buy some stuff, because they don't, you know, I know Chief wants
a chair that's probably seven feet high, so he can sort of throw it, so we have to get him something special.
Moving right along.
Any more questions about the 2665 lease?
No, I'm just pleased that this is the, the option that our police force was advocating for, and I'm anxious to get them into their own station, because I felt badly that they're squeezed into City Hall, living in their cars, or working out of their cars, without even really a place to shower, or hang, hang up, change of clothes. So the sooner we get them in, the better, better for the, for our operations, and for morale, and all concerned.
Yeah, with that detective office, I think there were what, five or six in it now? That looks like it saved the children from our shoulder when you walk in there, it's just, if they're on top of each other. I feel, I felt a little bad about that. So do we need to vote on this lease, or?
Well...
Or do we vote together?
No, because the other lease you don't have a copy of yet, and so we're gonna have to discuss the mechanics of that. What I would suggest is, is that a motion be made to authorize the Finance Corporation to enter into the Beaufort Highway lease, and authorize the President or Vice President to sign the lease on behalf of the corporation, with such changes as either he or she deem appropriate under the circumstances.
All right. Who was listening, the face was not, so Rebecca, you wanna do it for the motion?
I think so, sure.
I'd like to make a motion as stated by council.
Would that officially do it, or?
No, that's, no, that's fine.
Is there a second?
I will second.
I would just add, I, I would think that, I would be in favor of having both the chairman and myself, just to have two people in both ways.
Sure.
And the council's welcome, I mean, what we're seeing.
Yeah, we obviously like to sort of lay it to everybody.
I'll amend the friendly amendment.
But you said President, Vice President.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I said either/or. Either/or.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of the document and motion as stated by council, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
And, and Mr. President, based upon, you know, this discussion, and certainly will circulate the final form of the lease, everybody will sign.
Both leases.
Both leases.
All right. So no action on B, so is there a motion for adjournment?
Well, as far as the action on B, it needs to be discussed, as far as the business terms, and we do need to, unless you would like to have another meeting.
No, I mean, I just, just B said approval of the lease, and you said a second ago that we wouldn't be approving the lease.
No, because you don't have to approve it. So what I was, what I was gonna suggest is that we, we, that the city manager go through the business terms.
Okay.
We do have a form of the lease that they have provided to us, that Mr. Germin has under review. What we haven't received is the proposed lease from the landlord. So what we were suggesting would be to go through the business terms, approve those business terms, approve entering into the lease subject to those business terms, but allow the final lease to be approved by the attorneys and Ms. Garrett, and give the authority to Ms. Garrett and the attorneys to do the final terms of the lease, and, and certainly with Mr. Iyer, he's been reviewing everything, and would continue to do so. So we're, this is, you know, this is sort of unusual, because we don't have a lease document to give to you, however, you can approve it under those types of circumstances that are there.
Marie?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
You gonna go with the terms?
Yes. Thank you. All right, the, the terms of the lease are, it's a five-year lease, annual renewals. The building is three stories. The first and second floor are at $15 a square foot. The basement level, terrace level floor is at $7.50 a square foot. The upgrades to the building that the landlord owner will provide to us will be complete asbestos removal, installation of a sprinkler system, and sharing 50% of the cost of tenant improvements.
Does that include the ADA requirement?
Yes, it does. And there was a not to, there was no not to exceed number. We do wanna be as frugal as possible, because we're only looking for a short term of five years to be there, so...
Was that, I know, at one point you had mentioned the six-year proposal from the owner, or had you not?
That was the 2665 building.
In the tenant improvement allowance, there's a not to exceed blank, has there been discussions about what their expectations of the upset number are?
Originally, it was $400,000.
That was their contribution, or that total?
That was their contribution, but both parties, in my conversations with them and with the owner, it's the intent on both parties to keep it as low as possible, outside of the work that's gonna be required of them, and 100% for the sprinkler installation and the asbestos removal.
Which is only appropriate.
Correct. And that's bringing the building up to cover.
Is that removal of asbestos on all three floors?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, do you, do you have any kind of timeline from them, as to when we might get together on this?
Jim and I were in the building last week, and I think both of us were hoping we would see some prep work, staging, if you will, to start working on the sprinkler system and or asbestos removal. We didn't see that. I had reached out to the owner and had offered that we would manage that service for him, so that we can control the timing on it, on the, for the answer, right now.
On both of these projects, is there a, a need, or, I think there might be, for having like a, someone to manage these projects on behalf of the city that we look at, or?
Well, we have our building official, who's going to be inspecting the project, and Mr. Iyer and I are really the management team for the buildings. And we have a very interested tenant at 2665, the Police Department, that's in their daily checking.
So Chief might have wanted somebody to kind of look at that. Okay, all right. I still want you to be overloaded even more.
Thank you.
Is there an end date of when work is to be completed, the, the last drop dead date?
For us, there is.
Well, I'm talking about for the landlord.
For the landlord at the GSU building, or the...
Is he gonna be included? Because we have a lease that's...
He understands, yes, he understands that. But the, the critical path right now is, is to get the sprinkler system and the asbestos removed. That's the critical path, and I think Jim would agree, that we're looking at that probably as maybe a 30-day project, could be less, especially on the sprinkler side, it's, once you start running the pipes, that shouldn't take as long as, depending on the intensity of the asbestos removal. I can't imagine that it would take more than 30 days with a dedicated contractor on top of that.
Yeah, the only, the only hitch we may have is if they get into some areas where there are conflicts between pipe and, and removal, but, you know, the, the, we'd also talked about, with the city attorney, about putting some liquidated damages in, if they weren't done by a date certain, probably the end of January, so...
I think the discussion was January 31.
Yeah.
But if, if we undertake the, the management of that project for them, then the likelihood of being, of paying liquidated damages would not be reasonable, and frankly, my opinion is, given us the holidays, and if they would enable the city to do it, or the corporation to do it, you would be much better off managing that process, because otherwise, you're, even with liquidated damages, you could, the potential of having the holdover at the existing place would be, would be pretty gruesome.
Well, the, the real key then to getting it done is, is getting it underway, because there is somewhat of a lead time for design and fabrication of the sprinkler before they begin installing, and if we're gonna control that process, I don't know if the, if the landlord has a, has a contractor that they would like to use, because it's their building, and they're gonna be paying for it, or, and we manage the work, but we need to, to figure that out sooner rather than later, so that we can get going just after the first of the year.
That conversation is already being carried on by the landlord and the contractors that they have in their current, one of their other buildings. What they were trying to do is make a determination if they could pick up the additional work, because they have a, a very short fuse on getting the work done for that building. So they were looking at that, and I'm waiting for that answer. In the interim, I've reached out and said, why don't we manage that, so that we can move the project forward? So I'm hoping I'll have an answer by tonight, or, or by tomorrow.
What is our timeframe for moving in, both best case and worst case?
Worst case would be March 31. Best case would be to move in stages, probably sometime early March.
We have no AutoTrader furniture for that, do you not?
We do.
All right.
And part of that's being delivered tomorrow as well.
Where are they gonna deliver it?
Right now, we're looking at the basement of the GSU building.
Okay.
Yeah, this is actually been a great thing. AutoTrader came to us early on and offered some great furniture as they consolidate some properties, and had a, we went out and visited, what was it, a 60,000 square foot warehouse, with some great looking furniture and workstations, and Cox and AutoTrader just wanted to get rid of it, and thought it would make a fine donation to the city, and we said, we, we thought so, too.
To the corporation.
Well, actually, that will be to the city.
I'm sure it'll be a nice donation for them, but still, they could've sold it and rotated it. So we appreciate that.
All right. Any more questions about the terms to be negotiated on the...
Jim, just remind, Marie, this was the property we really struggled with for quite a while, that was sort of stuck at a $19 a square foot rate, is that right?
Yes, it, it was, it went back and forth in, in that field, anywhere from 19. At one time, it was a little lower than that, and then there was a stall, and it came back at, at a higher rate.
What did you do?
Well, I can't tell all my secrets.
Is this a...
I asked the owner to do the right thing.
So $15 a square foot is actually a very good, beautiful piece for you, from what I've seen.
Yes, it is. It is very below market rates, and I will tell you that.
What if it averages for that, two-thirds is 15, one-third is 750? That's a, how would you do that? Is that a, is that a gross, modified gross rate? What is taxes and insurance and put it into 15, or, or is that outside?
It is.
Okay.
It is. We're responsible for utilities.
Well, I'm glad we made this one work. I know we thought it was off the table for a while, because of the, the asbestos and the sprinkler system, but I'm glad the, you convinced the landlord to do the right thing and take care of all of that. And I think we're gonna really enjoy being on Peachtree, and right next door to town, Brookhaven. It's right in the center of the city, and well-located, and just gonna be great to be in the city of Brookhaven, for starters, and to have such a good location.
So that averages around $12, according to Joe and my math, for the square footage on Peach, for 24,000 square feet. I'd like to really, you did a great job, Marie, with that.
Thank you.
And thank you for making that possible.
Thank you.
We thank the City of Dunwoody for allowing us to house ourselves there for the year, but I am certainly not gonna miss that traffic.
Yes, exactly.
Not gonna miss, but the city hall, and where? Not gonna miss that question either.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? Jim, did you have anything?
No.
All right. Anything else, Tom?
If you wish to go ahead and authorize the entering into the lease, then a motion should be made to authorize the corporation to enter into the lease of the GSU building on the terms and conditions discussed by Ms. Garrett. Also authorize Jim Iyer, as well as the city attorney and Ms. Garrett, to approve the final form of the lease, and authorize either the President or the Vice President to enter into the lease on behalf of the corporation, with such changes as neither may deem to be appropriate under the circumstances.
Yeah, I will, I will move to accept motion as stated by council, counselor, but with change that it include the signatures of both President and Vice President. Correct. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion as stated, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
I mean, if we adjourn the, yeah, the Brookhaven Finance Committee meeting.
Finance Corporation meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
We have a home.
Yes. Merry Christmas, Chief, thank you.
You got your wish.
Let's hear some hammers, hammering.
I'm gonna call the December 17th work session meeting of the City of Brookhaven to order. Ms. Clerk, please, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Max Davis?
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Chase Williams, present. Councilmember Joe Gebbia?
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison?
Here.
All present.
All right.
All.
Thank you. I have no opening remarks, pre-regular meeting agenda review.
Yes, we'll start, Mr. Mayor, with the public hearing agenda. And in that public hearing agenda, the first item is the budget, 2014 budget. You all have received a copy of the budget. Did you all have any questions on that, before you opened it up for that?
I think I'm all questioned out.
I tell you, we've been through this thing a hundred times. Very well done.
This is the fourth public hearing on the...
Correct. Correct. So if you will open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor. Oh, excuse me, second item, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. We're on the work session, I know. Okay, second item for the public hearing is, is a rezoning. You're gonna have to separate the city attorney from myself.
I'll be quiet. My apologies.
It's a rezoning case, RZ 13-13, rezoning request from R 75, single-family, to R 88, single-family residential, at 1424, 1428, 1432, Sylvan Circle, 2396, 2400, 2404, Cuswellati Drive, to create a seventh lot, single-family detached residential development. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Don't touch the microphone.
Okay, I won't touch it. The, this case, RZ 1313, was heard by the commission, and the planning commission recommended denial, the staff did as well. At that time, the applicant requested deferral, which then transferred over to the council. As of this afternoon, we have received a request from the applicant to seek withdrawal of their application without prejudice. That will require that you open a public hearing to discuss that matter, but that is their official request, I do have them writing.
Any discussion or questions about that?
Just, just one question, that it, the withdrawal without prejudice still allows them to submit an application at the next available hearing for rezoning?
Since you're, if, if you do allow the withdrawal... Since you're, if you do allow the withdrawal without prejudice, since you would not be taking an action to deny, if that's what you choose to do, then the twenty-four month waiting period as well as the six-month waiting period without. They would lose their fee that they paid. But if you do grant this withdrawal without prejudice in that you have not taken an action to deny, then the ordinance is silent to the waiting penalty, so they would be allowed to file.
Got it.
Good, I'm glad that you had a chance to communicate with the developer and that was their intent. I think that's best for the neighborhood. They have started meeting with the neighborhoods and that outreach, so I'm glad that they're going through the right, the proper channels now.
Just two more comments, just to let you know that primarily, we recommended denial because we felt that it had economic use that was presently zoned, as well as all the environmental issues that were related to the development of that property. And just one more reminder, you do have to open a public hearing to entertain their request. Thank you.
I want to commend the planning committee for how they addressed this.
Well, one last thing, is there a representative of this, of Ryland Homes here today? Or will they, do we know if they're going to be here for the work session or public hearing?
I don't see them here now. I would surmise that they would be here, but in any event, I do have them writing.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're on the agendas, the public hearing. I guess when we got to new business number two, we would go to public hearing? Is that what we would do?
Now, you can start the public hearing right before you do the.
And then when you get to, you'll just hold your public hearing, receive comments, close the public hearing, and then we'll go to the city council agenda. And under new business are the.
That's why it says four twenty-nine P.M. Gotcha, okay.
I have a question regarding the public hearing, or I guess it would be maybe new business on the regular meeting. There was an application for a rezoning of the Nuts and Berries property. Is that, I know that that was. Was it withdrawn by the applicant also?
Now, that's the particular case where the staff made an error in that we should not have accepted the application. It did not meet the minimum filing requirement. We did notify the applicant and he is trying to make a decision on how he plans to move forward with his new plan and he is aware of the filing deadlines.
Just as a procedural question, so, you know, I would like to give some courtesy to the applicant as we sort of made them aware of the acreage requirement at the eleventh hour. And I understand that they need to go back and submit something to properly ask for rezoning that is legal. But at the same time, I hate to penalize a property owner an extra forty-five days and sort of reset the clock on them if there's a way that we can handle it without that penalty.
We just need to make sure we meet all the constitutional steps and at the point in time that we receive his application, we will have to carry that forward. And I hear what you're saying and I understand that and I feel your pain, I do. And we have communicated with Mr. Kick and he's fully aware. And at this point, we don't have anything to react to. I think he's trying to determine, initially had a phase one plan and a phase two plan. Now, I think he's going to probably come back in just with the phase one plan. But I think he's trying to determine what it is he wants to proceed with.
But their hearing was never heard by the planning commission, correct?
No.
So it was withdrawn before, it even got.
It was canceled.
It was canceled, right.
And there is no penalty. Obviously, we're refunding his money, we've already made that check request. And we're working with him. He actually had a representative here in the office this week on his behalf.
Okay.
And I think he's trying to determine what plan it is he wants to present.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify on the agenda, probably this is a question to the clerk. So we're having, the public hearing comes right at the top of our agenda?
No, just another, whole nother agenda before we do this, public hearing at four twenty-nine before we even get this in. It's not even listed on the agenda, it's just a separate meeting.
So it comes before the regular meeting?
Right.
But then we don't, we won't vote, so the public hearing is also on the budget as well? Is that right?
Correct.
But then we don't vote on the budget till later over in old business?
And we don't do, we don't take action on the rezoning until the second, until the regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just two public hearings?
You're just separating your public hearings from your regular meetings?
Gotcha.
This enables you to allow the public that's come to speak on the public hearing item to be able to do that at the front of the meetings? And then you can then conduct the rest of your business under the.
Say that again, I mean Rebecca brought up a good point. On this, we'll have a lot of people here on all this recognitions and other stuff. Could this not be tonight put in? Why does it need to be, I know that's the way I've noticed, but if, say we have ten people here to comment on this Ryland Homes thing and that's going to push our, it's not going to last one minute, it's going to probably last, it could last for thirty minutes.
We have the option of just placement all on one agenda if you want.
We would stop doing that for some reason, I know, but particularly for this one.
Well, we went, we've done it both ways.
Right.
And we did stop for a while and then we came back because there were so many people that were speaking to the matters on public hearing. And I think there was some confusion too, that when it's in the body of the agenda, the regular council agenda, you have to stop and then you have to open a public hearing. I mean, it can be done if you prefer it in that manner.
Maybe we could just set these public hearings more than, you know, minute before the regular meeting, so we'll have at least ten or fifteen minutes. So that there's, the public hearing would be at four fifteen rather than, or, you know, seven fifteen.
Okay, I see, okay. Well, we did that before and I guess we're just talking about how we can stay on top of it. We did that before and we had a separate sheet, which was the public hearing agenda, where we sort of yielded back to the, and then that created a little bit of a problem and so then we put it in the body of the agenda. But I know what you're saying and we can accommodate that.
Is there any chance that we could move the public hearing to, say, just before old business so that it's then just before when we vote on the budget and the rezoning? You've already noticed it, okay, never mind.
Well, you could open the public hearing and then ask to adjourn the public hearing, amend it so that you amend your agenda and it goes to that council agenda.
Let's just do it the way, hopefully it won't be that long, we'll just try to do it this way and we'll figure out it. And, you know, the new year, you know, since we've got a year, well, we've had a year under our belts, try to streamline when our meetings start and everything, you know, it's been hard because we've had so much stuff going on before our meetings and I'd like to try to give people a little more reliability when we start and then these things of how long they're going to last. And so now that we've got our year under our belts, we, I think we can, we'll just talk about it. We'll have a meeting made with you and Susan.
Okay.
And some counsel about how do we streamline and get things a little better.
May I make a suggestion that you could consider? That is, if you could ask for show of hands, who may wish to speak in regard to that particular case? And then state that we do have a request for withdrawal without prejudice, so that they're aware of that.
Okay.
And then maybe that would help them understand the proceeding that may.
I could do show of hands now because it's supposed to start in like twelve minutes.
That's just a suggestion.
That's a good, anybody here to speak on the Ryland Homes? Have they withdrawn their application?
They still want to.
No, if you still want to speak, that's fine, but.
All right, so maybe we go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Does that mean that you won't be voting on the issue?
That's right.
Just voting on, allowing withdrawal, won't be taking any action.
So pulling it back.
I'm thinking of pulling it back in order to speak with folks like you, the neighbors and whatnot. I've seen you all are neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure you understand what we're doing so you don't feel, we want you to have your say, so. But they have withdrawn it, all right? Next.
Okay, that's the public hearing items and then we're going to go on to the regular council agenda. All right, we have under opening remarks, there's swearing in of the new planning commission members, recognition of planning commission members whose terms are ending this month. And then our recognition of our Parks and Recreation Director, Ray Holloway. And then the recreation, excuse me, recognition of the Girl Scout troop who planned at bulbs in Brookhaven Park last weekend. Moving on then, we'll have agenda announcements. I don't have any unless counsel does. Public comment, consent agenda includes the December tenth city council regular minutes. It does not include the work session, we'll have that on your next agenda. The approval of the twenty-six sixty-five Beaufort Highway sublease and then the approval of four thirty, forty-three sixty-two Peachtree Road sublease. Announcements, we, later this evening, we will be making a presentation. The friends of Brookhaven will be making a presentation on the AED. So my purpose is just to give you an update is that they have met the challenge of our challenge grant and we'll be hearing more about that tonight at seven o'clock. Steering committee appointments, Mayor, those will be the appointments to the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan, the Beaufort Highway plan and the Parks and Recreation master plan.
Dana, do you have that list? Okay, because they're not going to be, it's not going to be fully complete, we just want to get some of them announced.
And some will attend, some will not.
And Mr. Mayor, we're planning now, probably mid-January as, when we come under contract, because we have gone through the interviews. A kickoff meeting probably the second or probably mostly the third week in January and that will bring all steering committee members together. We'll be bringing in the gentleman that gave us the overview on demographics and.
Okay.
I don't want to mispronounce his last name.
All right.
Coyman.
All right.
Coyman. Coyman, okay, all right. And then we have the zoning map audit update that we need to present to you. We're still working on the different vendors that have expressed an interest so we're trying to hone in on that so that hopefully this week we can have an announcement as to who we'd like to seek a proposal and cost proposal from. Old Business is the budget, two thousand fourteen budget. New Business will be going over, do you want us to go over some of the changes now or do you want to wait until the public hearing?
Let's wait until the public hearing because we can get back on track.
Okay, good. And then under new business is the ratification of the contract with asserting construction for the labor and materials for the renovation of twenty-six sixty-five Beaufort Highway. And then item number two under new business is the matter that is part of the public hearing, which the applicant has requested withdrawal without prejudice, Ryland Homes. And then the last item under new business is a resolution to support HB four eighty-six, the independent school resolution. And then other business, I don't have any, I don't have any matters for other business. Public comments, mayor's comments, executive session. We don't believe we need an executive session tonight unless counsel wishes to.
All right.
There was discussion about adding an agenda item with respect to the ZBA agenda?
Yes, that's.
Do we want to?
Yes, there was a discussion amongst some of the council members about calling for a moratorium for thirty days on stream buffer variances in order for the city attorney and the community development director and myself to get together on the language of the ordinance regarding that. So that would be something we would want to add to the agenda and that would be in the new business.
Y'all want to do that? That'd be under new business?
Yes.
I am, so really, our deadline of action is today. If the ZBA is ruling on variances on stream buffers tomorrow.
Yes.
This is our only option to do. I mean, it's four days, I think there's enough, there's enough ambiguity and concern that.
You will be stopping what's in the pipeline for tomorrow for the ZBA?
Yes.
That's right. You'd make the moratorium effective with the, effective with the resolution. And as it, just specifically, I think there are seven items on the ZBA. It might be helpful to get an update on how many of those seven, if there are seven, have requests for variances on stream buffers? I think at least five of them.
Four.
Four. The other three are just setback?
They're not setback.
All right.
Could the city attorney just sort of summarize that, why, the legal reasons behind why we might have this moratorium?
Well, it, as far as the matter going to the ZBA, the authority of the ZBA to hear matters relating to stream buffer relate to decisions by the director, by Ms. Cannon, not approving a buffer change. As I got into the ordinance and also looked at the four requests that are there, there is some ambiguity in the ordinance as it relates to redevelopment of properties that were in existence prior to the adoption of the fifty-foot buffer by the county of DeKalb, which we have also adopted as our buffer. That buffer really requires administrative variances only and in the event of denial, then that's what should be taken to the ZBA. There was some issue as to if there was a request to go beyond the twenty-five feet, which the director can approve administratively. Whether that is a matter for the ZBA, it's not clear and want to be able to determine that and right now, my feeling it is not. However, if you look at what her authority is under the ordinance, such as in the situations where there's the footprints not changing, then it can go into the entire fifty-foot buffer if it had been in there before. There's also situations relating to if the fifty-foot buffer makes the lot unbuildable, then there's also those exceptions in which she can make either denials or approvals associated with that. And so what we're asking for is the time to review that, to also review the requests because in my opinion, if you look at the requests and if you had to push them twenty-five feet away from the stream buffer, from the twenty-five-foot state mandated buffer, they would not be buildable. In some instances, they would be over the sewer lines and in some instances could get pushed to the street or in some instances would be, you know, so far in front of the required front yard setback, you know, that you wouldn't.
How many of these lots are totally vacant at this time that are applying for variance? Are any of them absent of a house? One of my neighbor does not. Would suggest that, you know, and I understand the city attorney's opinion, but to say that it's buildable or not buildable when there's a house there and we've heard that they can build on the same foundation suggests that it is a buildable lot even with the stream buffer where it's at. So I think we need to be careful with.
No, I agree with what you're saying, but I think if they, if they were all the way, if they were at the existing home, and this was the question that I had, there was only one instance which showed a before and after. The other three did not, which would be some information that I think, you know, that the director would want to obtain just by virtue of that fact. But some of those surveys is, they would have already had to have been on the twenty-five-foot buffer, notwithstanding the fact that if it had gone to fifty, even with the existing house, unless it was very, very small, would not have fit. And that's really what's the open question is. And that's why, you know, the moratorium is being suggested. One, the procedural aspect as far as going to the ZBA and the authority of the director to grant administrative variances and if she denies him, then those going to the ZBA.
Number one, I didn't realize we were going to be discussing this tonight, so I brought these files with me. The case on Rennes Road is actually a rebuild, it's a term down rebuild.
Have you had any comments from the public on that one?
No, sir.
That's all right.
Not that I recall. Let me rephrase that. I had probably fifteen emails of which I sent to all of you as well as the ZBA and they were kind of blended emails because they related to the overall larger concept of stream buffers in general relative to whatever we haven't written yet, what we've been discussing. The other email, another email related to the zoning case, which was. The other email, another email related to the zoning case, which was withdrawn tonight because it had a stream buffer issue as well. And the third aspect of the deluged emails was related to the ZBA cases. The staff was not able to segregate those emails and attach them to a case as we normally would because they appeared to be streaming emails that had attachments to them. So that's the reason we put them in a PDF and sent them to you so that we didn't leave anything out?
Right, I don't wanna mix the issues here. I kinda wanna know if there's opposition to specific homes and if doing a moratorium is gonna just cause a family to not get their.
The, the emails were, were all, all encompassing. They were encompassing of the zoning, so I couldn't, I couldn't separate them out and say.
Well, shouldn't you be considering emails that have an address for, for the homes? I mean, shouldn't they relate to the home that's on?
Well, I mean, we, because this issue is so.
It's a hot topic.
Yeah, it's a hot topic. It's such a hot topic now that we were being hit by many emails that we couldn't separate out the emails. They didn't attach perhaps the street address to what they were saying. In regard to Drew Valley, the one on Drew Valley.
That's a vacant lot. That's the one that's across from the, the Tension Farm?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's a vacant lot.
And, give me one second, please.
In the case of vacant lots, you, the ordinance does provide that you can only go to the 25 feet?
But, you know, I guess my point is this, we can't say the lot is unbuildable simply because, or if there's a house there, simply because somebody wants to tear down and build a bigger house. You know, there, there is a house there. They can build on the existing foundation. My point is, is, is what I'm hearing is we're sort of trending in a direction now that we're beginning to create definitions that may or may not be appropriate for the situation. You know, I, I think that, that, you know, unbuildable needs to be truly unbuildable. For instance, the lot on Drew Valley is probably close to unbuildable just simply because of the.
Well, we actually recommend a denial of the one on Drew Valley.
But, but anyway, but my, my point is, is that, you know, unbuildable means you can't put anything there. If there's an existing house there, then, then you can't put something there. It may not be what the owner wants to do, but you can put something there.
The one on Parkridge Drive is a demo and rebuild.
What did y'all, what were your, on the four or three that are up before the ZBA, what was your recommendation on all?
The first one, well.
One denial, two, three approvals.
But they're not that open and cut because it's denied.
Conditions.
They have conditions attached to them, so it's not just approval. It's modified approval, and one is for denial. And I will tell you that I'm in, on this matter with our prior legal counsel and our existing legal counsel, because of the language in the ordinance in Chapter 14, I do believe that the language in the ordinance goes too far with administrative approval, which is the reason why I feel that many of these do need to go to the ZBA. And that, and the Chapter 14 does indicate that an appeal and administrative decision should go to the ZBA. So that's something that we need to further discuss.
Well, and if I could just, I guess if we could, you know, discuss this. And the other thing with the moratorium is that we, we need to have a conversation about the ordinance and how we want to deal with this situation. If it's, and is also as far as the administrative variance is granted under that or whether or not we wanna make it a ZBA matter or do we want to change the conditions associated with if a variance is granted, then, then there are going to be conditions and we, we provide those conditions in the ordinance. And I think, you know, as far as council's concerned, I think this is another situation. And we know that this, that the zoning ordinance is going to be rewritten as well as we're going to codify our land development ordinance, which has not been done so, has not been done so far. So this is just another instance where we just have to sort of fine tune what, what the council wants to do with this. And certainly the issue of protecting our streams and protecting our waterways are important. I mean, that's what you're, that's why that's here. So really how we, we make a, you know, make changes to that is, is probably more important because right now, one, there's really no other avenue to go to other than the, the director to do it.
And you also have to look at sometimes the variance request could be to do a rebuild that might be a better configuration, that might provide for better quality water quality measures and mitigation. You, you don't know, so you have to look at each case on its own merit.
Yeah, based, based on the sensitivity of this matter, I'm, I'm in support of getting a 30-day moratorium, letting us study this issue. There are just enough issues out here that, that give pause and I don't see the downside of 30 days.
Other than to the people who, to like the people who are trying to get their house, who have the opposition, that's, that's the downside.
As a clarification, rather than 30 days, I'd like to suggest we go to the second regular scheduled meeting in January, which, because we're early this week, this month, that gives us two meetings in January to, or a little bit more time in January to review it and bring it back forward so we're not having to bring it to the first meeting.
Point of clarification, are you saying that the moratorium will, will run to the second Tuesday of January where it will be considered and possibly lifted? Or will it automatically lift?
It'd run to the.
Fourth, your suggestion, fourth Tuesday?
Fourth Tuesday, yes. To the second, our second regular meeting in January. So that we have an opportunity to, unless, you know, the council. I'm just afraid what's gonna happen is we're not gonna be ready by the first meeting and, and we either have a special call or we, we do it at the second. So, you know, it's, it's whatever the council desires. But I'm just saying from a timing standpoint, because we're off this week, because of the holidays, we'd, we'd miss a meeting in January.
And then the express purpose would be for a point of clarification in the ordinances that pertain to the availability or the capability or the permissibility of hearing variances in which body does that. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yeah, does, you, does the city manager and the city attorney support the moratorium?
The city attorney does.
Yes, I do, but for a limited time.
Just to, because of the.
For those, for those reasons that I listed, that's why I was asking because we're gonna have to be able to inform the public and not only those applicants for tomorrow night, but for anybody else that's filing. So we do have to have specificity when we call for a moratorium.
What the, to ask, ask, can we do it in 30 days and have it ready for the, for the first meeting?
We could give you an update, but.
I think, my suggestion is this, Mr. Ayers, that you've suggested before that by the first meeting in Tuesday, then we put on the agenda, the work session agenda in any proposed ordinance that we talk about. And then it could be in a position to be passed at the second meeting in January, whereby if we just did to the first, then we would not be in a position to do that and would probably have to extend the moratorium until we could do that.
I agree. I'm, I'm in favor of this and I'd rather be cautious than jump forward quickly. And this, it's gonna help define who Brookhaven is as far as how we tend to environmental issues. I'd like to request though, that at the first Tuesday meeting, we also involve an educational portion of our meeting towards. Stream buffers. And we bring in professionals to make sure that we're aware of sensitivities. Professionals. Professionals, that's, yeah, more than one would be great. And I would be very interested in knowing what the offsets we should be considering that we may not be aware of and could be included in the ordinance. So if somebody is going to be requesting a variance, that we're, we're ahead of the game with it and what we can be suggesting.
That might be a special call meeting before the next, or, you know, maybe earlier that day or something.
Well, I was thinking during the work session.
Or a longer one.
Yeah, make it during a longer one. Let's make sure that we announce properly, get as much input from the citizens that participate in this also.
Well, that'll give us time between now and then to.
Right.
Bring somebody on and identify who that person is.
And I'll put the challenge out to a fellow councilman to also help seek professionals in that area.
I've got some names.
Can I ask you this? Susan, if you, if we have a moratorium, does that prohibit someone from demolishing a home just before they build? I mean, of course they wouldn't be able to get a building from it until they got their variance or it was denied or whatever, but is, would that require any other work?
It depends on how you word the moratorium. You would have to word it that it does not prevent demolition. Depends on, on what.
Okay.
They have to apply for a demolition permit separately.
Correct. But what he's saying is if you, they, they declare a moratorium.
All activities.
Would that prevent someone from filing an application for a demolition permit?
No, I wouldn't think it would.
Well, if you wanna, if you, if you, as far as a total standstill, including demolition, if it's not your intention for there to be a demolition, then let's make it clear that that does apply.
It's moratorium for stream buffer.
Applications and approvals only.
That, and, and.
Correct.
Applications and approvals.
I would also like to ask, in that educational form, if you plan to include Bennett White, our Development Services Manager, professional engineer, as well as Carl Carver, who's our Stormwater Utility Manager, and also a PE. If you plan to include those two provisions.
Staff will ultimately put together the agenda, but we're just, you know.
Just wanted to not oversight the fact that they are very credentialed in their field. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, well, that's.
That would, we now need to go flip back if we can to the work session agenda because that completes the. All right, for upcoming agenda items for sometime in January or thereafter, an ordinance review the adopting of Chapter 16 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the code.
If, if I may speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. The final draft was completed today. My suggestion is, is that we, that that will be circulated and that, that matter be taken up for consideration and vote at the first meeting in January.
Okay. That's the 14th, correct? Do we know if that's the 14th?
Looking at it now.
All right.
And, and that will be circulated for your Christmas reading.
Other agenda items?
I don't have any other agenda items.
Other business?
Other business, just wanted to give you an update. We did conduct interviews for the comprehensive plan and this is with consultants, the transportation plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. Well, the, the interviews were with the first three. Of course, you know about Beaufort Highway. We are moving towards an execution of a contract with Beaufort Highway, which we will be sending out to you all. Hopefully, we will, we've just had the interviews with the other consultants with the other three plans. We still are reviewing those submittals and our notes from the interviews. And we expect to solicit proposals from the top firms from each of those three plans. And it's my hope that we will be doing that by the end of this week, completing, reaching out to them to have them submit a proposal. All of that being said, that we'd like to have a kickoff meeting. I know, Mayor, that you're getting ready to announce some of the steering committee members and we would like to have a kickoff meeting most likely by the third week in January. And that is, of course, contingent on that we have been able to go through the contracts, agree to the terms and the pricing, and be able to get that back to you all for approval. So we're looking at third week in January, could go to the fourth week, but it'll be as quickly as we can get through the contract negotiations.
Can you, can we receive an email update, who your top three firms were for each of the, each of the master plans? And also what, what sort of deliverables they were being asked to qualify for or provide as part of their master planning? There's some question as to what and who and how all this is gonna come together. So I think if we could get some additional information, some specifics on, on who the top three candidates are and, and what they'll be expected to deliver, that would be helpful.
Yes, I'd be happy to get that out.
Thank you. All right. Review the purchasing policy?
That's the city attorney.
And this is the last item on the work session agenda. Immediately following the work session agenda, we're gonna take a four-minute break and then we're gonna come back and have the public hearing, which shouldn't last too long. And then we'll open the regular council meeting.
What you have in front of you is a memorandum that I prepared in connection with the last November relating to the purchasing policy and some of the issues relating to that policy and certain recommendations with regard to it. This was predicated on the fact that there were some questions as to the authority of the city manager in order to consummate purchase orders on budgeted items where those budgeted items were in excess of $50,000. What I point out to you is that the, first of all, there is no capital, there is no capital plan, capital budgeting plan, which the purchasing policy makes reference to, one of which you asked me at the last meeting last week in order to come up with a draft of that policy. What I've pointed out to you is that the policy that you have now is that the city manager has the, the right to purchase items that have been budgeted, particularly as far as capital items. But it also says that you have to approve all capital budgeted items in excess of $50,000. So there's, so there's an inconsistency. So as far as the, the act that took place with regard to the ordering of the cars, which you all knew, you know, was, you all knew what was going on and what was being purchased and everything else, was within her authority. And that's my opinion. However, and I think it just brings the discussion, one, as far as capital policies, and clarifying at what level of authority you want to have to give the city manager associated with purchasing items under a capital budget. Because I think that's really where, where it gets down to. And it's not really the matters as it relates to contracting associated with things taking place from the general fund and those types of things, but, but really as it relates to those budgeted items. My, my, my suggestion is, is that we have, and I'll make these notes and we'll pair a policy for you to review next month. But where you're dealing with personal property and you do approve the budget of those amounts, then, then in my opinion, it appears appropriate to enable to issue purchase orders associated with that. If you're talking about, which we know leases or contracts or items in which you're going to make improvements to real estate, that's different. Okay, that's not a, you know, a fungible type item that, that would, even though it would be budgeted, those, those, those items, once before you started to work, would, it would be appropriate to come back to council. And, you know, certainly everybody can have their views as to, you know, what they desire. And I think it would be very helpful for the council members to send to me and to Ms. Garrett your thoughts as far as levels of authority associated with what's, what you see here as far as developing this other policy and then really then just clean up the purchasing policy so there's no inconsistencies with it.
All right. Any questions, quick questions on that? This is an update. We can do what you said, send any emails. Does anybody have anything right now? You wanna look at this and think about it, send some emails later this week or something? All right. Any announcements, Marie?
No announcements, other than looking forward, well, introducing our, nothing for the work session agenda. I'm getting ahead of myself because I'm excited about an announcement for the council meeting, so.
Is there, the announcement would be the.
Would be our Parks and Recreation.
Right, that, that, the commemoration celebration tonight, is it? What time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock on the table here, right?
On the green.
All right.
And also later this evening, introducing our Parks and Recreation Director.
Right, and all the steering committee folks?
Correct. So, lots of, lots of announcements.
No executive session, thank goodness. Is there a motion for a adjournment of the work session?
I mean, we adjourn this work session meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the work session meeting is closed. We're gonna take a three-minute break. And we'll start with the public hearing on the budget and the Rowland Homes resounding withdrawal. So three minutes. Daniel, can you?